Hey. Um, Bill, are you recording?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is Jeff.
I'm Jim.
I'm Marty.
Okay, Frank.
Won my election?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't either. Okay, so this is the Enfield Planning Board. It is September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Calling the meeting to order at six thirty P M. We are in the Enfield D P W at seventy-four Lockhaven Road. And we are also on the Teams video platform. And I don't believe we have any guests signed yet at this point.
Uh, yeah.
And our guest tonight here is Cee Lee Mafiero. Hi, Cee Lee. Uh, board members present from my left.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
David Fracht.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Bill Griffin, alternate.
I'm Taylor Staff.
Whitney Banker, also alternate.
And Rob Taylor. And.
You're in that gym.
Okay. So. We have no hearings, no conceptual. Eric, select board report?
Sure, so our meeting last week had discussion of some RPA funds, uh, which a number of good ideas, but we're gonna wait until November until we have more data on where the budget is and how we get through the C I P for this year. And where we know, and when Martin Rashon, the Whitney Hall Elevator Budget as well. And then another long, good discussion on the subject ordinance draft. And we got down to the point where we're gonna have public hearings on it next. And then not at our regular meeting, but we had a special meeting Monday night and had a non-public session around the sale of Shed Street. Result of that meeting was authorizing town manager Ed to negotiate with Bobby Oaks Company on the sale of that property. So at this point, that's sort of all we can say, but it's moving for that is moving forward, which I think is a positive step for that property.
It won't be storage, will it?
They was, I guess all I'll say is they responded to an R F P for housing. So it's a, it's a housing proposal. I mean, that's, you know, they responded to an R F P for housing. But there, they've got a lot of work to do. It's, there'll be negotiations around it. It's, um, but I'm optimistic. I think it's a, it's a good concept they have and forward.
Excellent. Any questions for Selectman Russell? Rob, Administrator's Report.
Do you want to, was it back on? You want to appoint an alternate?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Uh. Let's see, who was alternate last time? Whitney, you wanna be the alternate today? Okay. Try to rotate it a little bit.
So just tacking on to what Eric was just mentioning, uh, the Whitney Hall project, I got, I actually got to go on a tour this week on Monday with Ed. Uh, we went through there and the progress is coming really nicely. The crew that's in there working is unbelievable and they're really working hard. They were, they were in there over the weekend. And it seems like we're on a sort of glide path for taking up occupancy in early November, which I think is really good news. Obviously, there's potential for wilders. Yeah. Very excited about that. I was very impressed. The, the library space upstairs is gonna be gorgeous. Lots of natural light and, uh, and then, of course, the meeting space at the top is gonna be excellent. Plenty of room to spread out there for big medus and so forth. It's fairly busy just with speculation. I've, I've talked to many, many realtors in the last three days. There's, it seems like a little bit of an uptick, uptick in inventory on the market. Couple of interesting properties, putting very large parcel on Goodhue that's getting a lot of interest. I mean, it's hundred-plus acres up there. You may eventually see something from that because my understanding is the parcel in question is on class six, the access is on a class six. So we've been sort of discussing how that possibly works. And obviously, we have a class six road policy to reference and it would obviously be a partnership with you guys and the select board for how that could or could work. And so be very interested to see what happens there. It is in the conservation zone. It's far enough of Goodhue, which is off of Route four A, to be very much in the conservation zone, the tan district on that map. And so you guys know about the zoning there. It's, you know, very, very significant zoning setbacks in that area. The other thing that became clear as I started consulting and people would call, we have a height limitation of twenty-five feet height in that zone. So you can't build a thirty-five-foot house on conservation land or conservation zone. It's not conservation land. So, um, that's been a little bit of a disappointment to some of the people interested in that property. You know, typically, you're talking about somebody that wants to put up a big fancy house with horses and, you know, spread out. But they can't do it. And so there's also setbacks to water and it is, you know, much more so than regular zoning. It's, it's, it's kind of, you know, limiting, which I think is what the design was, was created for, right?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Well.
Yep. I think, I think that parcel had been logged, so there's not a lot of timber on it, but we'll see. Continue to have fairly strong interest. Like I said, I've talked to, just in the last twenty-four hours, I've talked to three realtors on that one parcel. So, um, you know, they wanna know what is possible and what isn't possible. So I've been kind of trying to give them some guidance. Got a staff meeting tomorrow or executive team, sort of leadership team meeting. We're gonna be talking budgets and we're talking key performance indicators for each department, following up on some of the strategic planning work that we did with select board a number of months ago. Let's say. Budget season is kicking up. I know you, uh, your committee met on Monday night and I think budget has been tomorrow night. Is that right? Yep. So things are starting to roll along there. See, what else? Anybody has any questions? I mean, obviously been sort of steadily along. We're gonna try to get the T I F committee to meet again fairly soon for a couple of reasons. Uh, town manager has me working on some review of parking in the downtown. Done some analysis on how many spaces in each parking lot that we have control over and sort of reviewing that. That'll be a discussion item, uh, tomorrow at our staff meeting. I did send you guys the building permit thing. I apologize as I looked, looked at, and tonight I was gonna print one. The formatting, it was portrait, should have been landscape.
Yeah, I tried to change it.
So that you can get that in there. Uh, and I will, I can send you guys a refreshed version of that. We're still tweaking that. As I said, uh, from Tim's guidance, we did come up with classifications. I think we came up with six or seven classifications, electrical, plumbing. A D U was one of our residential unit so that we can kind of sort it. We can play with it if we want to, which I think will be good. Building inspector was at some training today, got him conquered. He seems to have hit the ground running, seems to be fairly comfortable. Early feedback I'm hearing from, uh, builders is that he's easy to work with and he's pleasant and has a good demeanor. So that's a good sign. Our old building inspector moved on to Lebanon. I don't know if you guys knew that. Liam has now taken up, uh, work in Lebanon. I have heard from a couple of people in Lebanon that Lebanon has now developed a pretty strict reputation for being sort of by-the-book guys, which is fine.
He definitely is.
Yeah.
Bill opened the book right in front of you and show you the page.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he was very much a stickler for, uh, having those books, too.
They've been that way for a long time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's about it. We still on a path for the zoning appeal to be heard in early November. I believe it's the thirteenth for the appeal at the Hillsborough Superior Court North, which is in Manchester. There's been, you know, a lot of back and forth with attorneys and so forth, but, uh, and I think we'll see, uh, those applicants in the not-too-distant future for further approvals. They need special exception for wetlands, and I think they're gonna continue to move forward with their applications even, even with, uh, the appeal active. So I talked to them. I just talked to one of their people today about that. So I think they're gonna shoot for. We did not have a Z B A meeting last night. There was no applications for, uh, for that meeting. So we canceled that meeting. And then master plan, if we wanna talk about it more, but we do have a meeting set up for Monday of next week as the contractor is now starting to deliver chapters, uh, draft chapters.
Draft chapters.
Yep. For the ultimate final product that will be the five new chapters that will be added to the existing chapters that we've already got. I looked through, uh, what they've sent so far. They've given us two of the five and they look very, very much.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, same look and feel?
Absolutely. Very much right in line with what we've got on the others. So I think it'll be kind of a easy to insert right in and not, you know, they won't look awkward by any means. So be, that'll be good. And we continue to get great utility out of that photography project that we did last year with the aerial, photographer, the drone photographer. Yeah. They use some of those images that came out excellent.
I, I ran into her over the weekend while I was out knocking on doors.
Yep.
And she said that she has, um, increased her library of Enfield stuff and we are welcome to tap into it.
Well, that'd be awesome. Yep.
That's what I told her.
Yeah, I thought she did excellent job. I, I do, uh, know her partner was in the other day to talk to me and says she is very, very busy as a real estate photographer. She makes, you'll see, if you look on the listings, I like to Google Monday morning, Enfield, New Hampshire Real Estate, and it'll literally take you to the Realtor dot com site. You can kind of see what's happening, real estate-wise in Enfield. And a lot of those properties have her photography. Of course, when they do those aerial shots, it makes every place look spectacular, even if it's just a little seasonal camp on the lake. But when you've got a little bit of elevation and the view of the lake in the background, it makes it look beautiful. So she's done quite well. She's very active in the real estate business. Well, that's it. Anybody have any specific questions, fire away, but I'm here to help.
Okay.
Awesome.
Uh, see. Old business. We have a bunch of stuff all relating to.
Wanna do the minutes?
Oh, yeah. We could do that. Thank you, Brad. Um.
Does anybody need coffee?
Anyone have any comments, corrections?
Comment slash addition, line thirty-four. There is some driveway. It just seemed awkward. I'm not sure how to, maybe there is some sections of driveway. I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Just to make it a little.
Sections of a driveway.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else?
Didn't find anything.
If you're good, do you wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Motion made and accepted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll see.
Opposed? And what, we abstained? Who, who said they would abstain?
Me.
Okay. So under old business, we have a lot of stuff, uh, regarding the zoning rewrite project and a few of the potential, uh, zoning amendments for the twenty-twenty-five town meeting. If there's no objection, I would like to talk about the rewrite project first because if we decide that we're gonna do a HOP two grant, we have to figure out what it is that we want, want to ask for in terms of scope of work. And all of that has to be nailed down and submitted by the end of this month, which is basically two weeks. So, um, I would like to start addressing that issue and hopefully, you know, if we spend an hour on it, we spend an hour on it. But I really think we gotta nail it down tonight. Folks will remember, Tim presented an outline action plan, which was this document. Unfortunately, he had to attend a funeral down south. You know, he's not with, with us tonight to explain and expand, but I think, uh, the document itself is reasonably self-explanatory. And I'd like to hear what people have to say about it. Wanna just go around the table, starting with Linda?
I was wrestling with my, my jacket. I wasn't paying attention about what you wanted.
Okay, so.
Which is the subject? The zoning rewrite?
That, this document, uh, that Tim handed out last week.
Oh, I don't have that one.
Didn't get a digital copy of that, did you?
Uh, no, he handed out hard copies last week.
It's like when you get it. It's often put on your.
Yeah, put it up on the screen. Put it on the screen.
Put it on the screen.
That would be the best way.
Yeah.
Let's just wait until he comes back, I guess.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what we can do, we can jump to new business, which are the November and December calendars. I can take a look at those two months. Our second meeting of each month would fall on the day before Thanksgiving for November. And in December, it would fall on Christmas Day.
We can do a bump.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, Dan. Are, are you gonna dress up as Santa Claus?
Not if I can help it.
Okay. Phil, are you gonna grow your beard and be Santa Claus? All right, Phil's gonna be Santa Claus.
Do we wanna back up one of them?
Um.
I guess the question is, are we gonna need them because we're gonna be getting, getting those zoning amendments?
I, I'm thinking we're gonna need both of them.
Yeah.
And.
We move them to the first and third?
I, I, I don't have any problem with that.
The first would be conservation. No, it wouldn't. Conservation's on Thursday. So the first Wednesday is probably not a problem.
Then it'd be the second and the sixteenth for October. I'm sorry, for.
For November.
Yeah.
Sixth and the twentieth. Twenty, this is.
Twenty, twentieth is the third. Yeah. The third Wednesday.
Yeah.
Of November. Of November.
Yeah.
As long as the room is available or we can find an alternative room, I think that would be a good.
Well, the new library's open.
Whitney Hall, Whitney Hall's gonna be done by then, yeah, Dave.
I'm not, I'm not holding my breath.
I'm gonna sit on the floor.
Community nursing committee is meeting November twentieth at five-thirty.
Where?
It's stuck.
They usually meet here.
Yeah.
Here.
Yep.
Uh, how long do they usually run? An hour, two hours?
Hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Yeah.
So we met at seven?
Everybody, create seven?
We're probably here still.
Okay. So November, we put this in the notes, Whitney, I guess, or in the minutes. November will be on the sixth at six-thirty and on the twentieth at seven. And then in December, what if we did the fourth and the eighteenth? What kind of, what kind of conflicts are there on those two dates with other committees?
But is the fourth one of our regulars?
No.
Oh.
So, so it becomes the fir-, the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday.
Old Home Days Committee is not here, so that wouldn't be a conflict. Looks like we could do the fourth.
Okay. So fourth at six-thirty.
What was the other date?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Same, community nursing, security nursing.
At seven?
At five-thirty.
Yeah, so we could just.
So we'll do seven.
Yeah.
That was easy.
And we need to be sure to tell Lisa.
Yeah, I asked to get.
Yeah. Rob, we set our dates for November and December. And there's some time changes and whatnot. Whitney has all that info.
Awesome.
And if you would be good enough to get that information across to the town office so that it's up on the website and nobody comes in and steals our space from under us.
Roger that.
Okay. So. You've got, uh, Tim's, Tim's document?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
There.
Why don't we give Linda a little bit of time to study it and maybe we'll just start with Brad?
Well, I did not read it in depth, but I did go over it. A lot here. There, there's a lot and a lot of subwork. And I think part of the subwork is gonna require reaching out to the community, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so similar to what we did with the lakes, which I think we should probably do again. So I'm just concerned about the volume of trying to get public input. I think one of the areas that we really need to emphasize going forward is public input.
I agree.
And, and, and there's a lot of it. And whether we combine and, you know, just have a couple of sessions for the public or we break into subgroups like we did with the lakes. A lot to be done.
Absolutely.
Get sucked into the C I P. That's quick. And, and, and the other thing is get participation, you know? I mean, the participation has been minimal so far. So how do we get more community involved? That's, that's my concern. Lot of effort out there.
Well, um.
Until, until we publish it, then everybody comes screaming. Right, it's, it's dynamic because in my opinion, humble opinion, we were very successful with the public, with the master plan. Not so much with this stuff.
I, I think you hit the nail on the head. And my, I think there are a couple of reasons why we were not successful. One is that the entire project was rushed.
Yes, that's true.
Um, yeah.
Yep.
Number two.
And we fundered.
No, number two is that we combined master plan part two with zoning part one. And people all showed up and they didn't know what they were doing. And we got less than satisfactory, um, responses. And I think we learned a few things, but by no means do I feel confident that what we learned is a reflection of how the majority of people in this town feel.
Yeah.
So. What I'm thinking is that we have a series of discussions based around these different affinity groups, I call them. I talked to Lindsay the other day and asked her if she would be interested in facilitating those discussions. And she didn't say no. She, she actually, she actually did say that, that she would be interested.
Yeah.
After the first of the year. I, I think there are some advantages to having her facilitate group discussions rather than any of us do it. The main advantage being is that she's experienced.
So you're talking about, uh, groups where the public would be invited?
Yes. Definitely, the public would be invited. There would be a specific topic, date, time, place. And she would work with us in terms of developing the, the goals or the subject matter for each particular public input session. And, you know, ba- based on what we did for master plan phase one, it was a reasonably successful plan.
Yeah. Well, it was a successful plan, but it was definitely successful on public input.
Yeah. And we're gonna need, you know.
We need the same thing.
We're gonna need a lot of public input in order to get this thing passed.
Absolutely.
And online. Bug for online input.
Yeah.
Someone very busy.
Yes. No, no, I mean, I, I think the online stuff was, was very good too. The survey that we did.
Yeah, but I, I, I think, you know, when we sit around with an invited group of twenty or thirty or forty people.
You, you get the.
We get, we get a cross-section of opinions.
Yes.
And.
And you get the creative stuff where you don't get that on survey.
Yeah.
I think you need both, but, and, and then how would this jive with a potential consultant phase two?
We would gather the data and we would, I think, try to distill what the public tells us into a coherent philosophy.
And have them write it.
And then have them write it in terms of legal, legally enforceable zoning ordinances.
Right, and how, um, this HOP grant phase two, how restricted are we in terms of what they can do for us? Is it, is it housing or can we bleed it into the whole thing?
I, I'm going to raise that question tomorrow. I'm gonna be attending the second Housing Academy session down in Bedford. And I will have that discussion.
Because if we hear anything other than it's very flexible, I don't think we should do it.
Right. We're, we're doing what we tried, we've tried to do the last time.
Guys are hands.
We're taking a housing grant, try to shoehorn it into zoning rewrite.
Didn't really work.
And if I was them.
Yeah.
I would have figured that out. That I love grant money. But the HOP grant is for housing piece. Unless we're gonna come up with a, a real different way of doing housing in Enfield because the, the HOP grants were meant to add to housing stock.
Right.
Unless we're gonna come up with that, I don't see it being able to be shoehorned into a zoning rewrite.
I get, I guess my reaction to your comment, Dan, is we, in the original HOP grant, HOP one.
Right.
We did talk about a zoning rewrite.
Yeah.
They didn't say no.
Yeah.
And we do allow housing in all of our districts.
Yeah.
And.
Forgive me, who is they, the state?
The, they is the grantor.
Yeah, right.
Okay? The people who have New Hampshire housing.
Yeah, just wanna make sure.
And New Hampshire. Okay.
Right.
And I lost my train of thought. Adding to the housing stock, it, it's like the master plan. Everything is interrelated.
I agree.
And, you know, you're not gonna get people wanting to build in Enfield if there's nothing to do.
Well, and the other side of that, David. Well, and the other side of that, David, is a master plan has no regulation to it.
Right.
A zoning ordinance does.
Mm-hmm.
And you can get people to buy into grand ideas.
Mm-hmm.
It's the specific ideas that become an issue.
Absolutely.
Yep, we're finding that with the septic pumping.
Yep.
It's the specific ideas that become the major issues. How does it affect me individually? A master plan doesn't affect me individually.
Right.
At all.
Right, it's, it's a grand scheme.
It's a grand scheme.
It's land use.
It's aspiration.
But it's a, right, it's aspirational.
Absolutely.
Um, and I just, I mean, we've got, it means we've got to put a large amount of what we do in the zoning rewrite to housing.
Yeah.
As opposed to land use, because it's not the same thing.
Okay. I would, I would agree with that.
It may mean, but I mean, things you could rewrite is you could rewrite the cluster. Because the cluster is considered a housing option.
Yeah.
Make it more easily attainable. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
Um, as long as, as long as they understand that the reason we want the HOP grant is we're gonna be rewriting zoning ordinances, but they're going to be housing intensive.
I mean, the whole, the whole goal of the HOP grant is to ultimately wind up with a set of zoning ordinances that are more friendly to housing.
Right, okay.
So, you know, I, I think we're on the same page.
Right.
As far as that goes, and hopefully we'll find out tomorrow, or at least I'll be able to raise the question of how far we can extend the bubble of housing.
Right.
And if they say, well, if we're gonna I don't know, you know, if, if we're gonna totally redefine our commercial district.
Right.
Um, to allow bowling alleys and seven, seventy-five restaurants and three sports bars. Um, because that will attract people and they will want housing. Um, they might say no.
Right.
I get that.
Yeah, okay, but that's, that's, that's my only thing is I just hope that, that we don't get constrained by the HOP grant.
I, I think what I would like to see happen is that we take the HOP grant as far as we can.
And then take.
And, and then whatever we can't squeeze into the HOP grant, then we figure out a way to do that on our own.
What's the timeframe on when the HOP grant?
Has to be finished.
Has to be finished while it's awarded too.
Well, it's, okay, submission is in the end of this month. Uh, awards, Rob, the end of the year.
This is okay.
Which means we would, and then I, I don't recall how long we have. Uh, HOP one was, I think, three years to accomplish the goals.
No.
Two.
Not even two.
Not even two, it was eighteen months.
Well, for us, yeah.
Well, yeah, but.
But, but fr- from the time that HOP grants were awarded to the hard cutoff date of this past July, I think was two or three years.
We got it, yeah.
We got it late. We were coming, we came to the table very late.
So we didn't put into it, put into it, in for it until?
Until it was going for, I'm, I'm gonna say at least a year.
Okay. Oh, yeah, it's two or three years and that's one thing, but if.
Yeah.
It's.
If it's eighteen months, that's an impossible task.
I see, I thought we, oh, because we, we didn't even, we hadn't even, we had, we hadn't even hired the group that went to Australia a year ago today.
Right.
Okay.
Right. But the, the grant itself started a long time ago.
Okay, as long as it's two, three year, even eighteen month would probably help, but, um, I just don't wanna get bogged down into we gotta have this finished in nine months.
I, yeah, I, I, I don't think that, I, I, I don't think that's what they want to see happen.
Okay, good, then that's a good thing.
Yeah, Linda.
I would rather see us do fewer things and do them well and do the community part of it well.
Mm-hmm.
And accomplish those and do a good job. And I think we lost credibility with some of the confusion of throwing out so many ideas. It, it was a time issue because there wasn't time for us us to review everything and
So.
I ju- I, I, I know that, um, Tim very much wants to get it all done sooner, but I'm, I question that we have the resources.
I.
And I don't just mean money, I mean everyone's time to get enough committees together.
I agree. I agree. Um, Linda, while you were speaking, Rob pointed out behind you that the cutoff is September of twenty-sixth.
Oh, well, that's a little.
That's two years. So that's two years or almost two years.
Eighteen months.
Because you won't get an award until next year.
Right.
Right, you won't have anybody hired until probably February or March.
Yeah, we won't have a contract, probably from the, the state until January, then.
Yeah.
So, that, that's kind of the way I would like to proceed, um. Anyone else have any, any comments?
I guess I have a different perspective. I, I do like what Tim wrote down. It's aggressive. I think we need aggressive at this point. I think we have heard tremendous feedback over the last five years. And I think we are ready to put pen to paper and write a draft. Will the first draft be good? Probably not, but that's okay.
Right.
Until we have a draft, we're not ready for more feedback. Because the feedback's gonna be a thing, you know, big ideas. We want more housing in the village.
Do you think people need to respond to something in black?
I think we need, I think we need, I actually think the, um, you know, the potential subject regulations around lakes is a good analogy because do we want clean water in our lakes?
No.
Everyone answers that question with yes.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It's not until you actually put it on paper that people start saying, well, how does this, how does my property fit into this? How do my neighbors' properties fit into this? You know, what distance back from the lake? You know, it's not until you have those details that you can have a real discussion around, you know, should it be five acres? Should it be ten acres? Should this zone be fifty acres? Until you write a number down, you can't, you know, talk about, what is a tall building? What is a short building? Those all mean different things to different people. And I think we can get a reasonable draft if we take Tim's approach within the next six months. Will it be what we take the town meeting? Absolutely not. But I think, but I think that, uh, that the way he's broken it down, small working groups can put together a draft, and then you'd have drafts that you can take into the public comment section. Um, and I don't think we're gonna be able to have, uh, so I think the use of the HOP grant would be more for reviewing those, for consistency, for legality, to talk through a variety of things. But after the results of the first one, I don't think they're gonna be able to draft it for us. I think we're gonna have to do that ourselves. And it's gonna be hard, but I think we have to commit to writing the draft ourselves.
And so there's a language, if you will, for zoning language, right?
Mm-hmm.
So how will we ensure that when we are writing drafts that we are following what is normally accepted in terms of language and nomenclature and all that?
Right, so the, the first round will probably get a lot of stuff wrong. And that's where I think a consultant come in very, very helpful. Because they can look at it and, you know, like even, um, you know, looking at like the ADU stuff, this, the intent of this is good, it's written well. But even within here, right, it's written as dwelling units, apartments. Uh, you know, there's like three different words used for the same thing. I don't know which one's right, but, but that's not really what's important in this one. We need somebody who's skilled to do that editing and to bring it forth and to make all the sections come together. But this clearly communicates sort of the draft's intent, I think. Uh, and I think we need things like this for each section.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think Tim's.
Mine is a rough draft, very rough.
Yeah.
But it's, it's something to start.
Tim's ultimate is to light a fire under our box. Tim also wants to rip off other towns.
Oh, yeah.
Healthy.
Which is fine.
Yeah, yes.
Gutten paste is good.
Yes, we don't need to reinvent. I mean, obviously, Enfield is unique, so we will come up with good ideas from multiple sources, but I mean, you can absolutely look at some other successful towns that.
Well, we did that with the master plan.
Well, I'm not gonna.
I think our ordinance that we've got is lifted from other towns as well, you know?
We're not gonna throw away what we've got in its entirety.
Right, we don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I, I do think we're at the point where we need to write drafts. And I think Tim's got a pretty good plan sort of to get a draft on the table. And if we just start asking for more ideas again, we'll hear the same things we've heard before. They'll all be goodwill intentioned ideas.
Right.
But until you write it down, there's, you know, you haven't made a step, the next step forward.
Okay. So just to paraphrase what, what Eric has put on the table, um, we have these small work groups and I think Tim is proposing one or two members of the public. Um, and they write on a very first rough draft. And then we bring our consultants in to try to clean that up.
And I think we take into the public too. I mean, those are what we, those are what we need to get feedback on. Those are what'll really stimulate things. Like, like I think Brad spent a lot of time living on the lake, talking to lake association, listening to all the people around their concerns. So I'll pick on Rich and say, uh, over there, I say, I, I think, I think he could, um, could write a draft for the, the, the showing. Will it be perfect? I think Brad can do it.
If you can do it. If Eric says I can do it, I can do it.
I'm just saying, I, I, I don't think that, that Brad's gonna hear something new. He's gonna struggle with all the different things he's heard. But he's spent, you know, years now listening to, to the concerns of people in that district and, um, and has a huge depth of knowledge and being able to, you know, figuring out a way to print on papers is valuable. I think if you look at the different districts, there's, there's probably folks who can at least write something down in a, in a, in a functional way.
How, how is, how are we to sort out the conflicting viewpoints at this stage?
That's what writing a draft will do.
Right.
That's the whole reason to write a draft, is, is you're never going to reach a point where one draft reaches a hundred percent of the vote and everybody loves it.
Right.
That's just not, right, that's not gonna happen. So, so this is one of those, you know, how big should a lot be? Well, some people are gonna feel one way, some are gonna feel another. You're never gonna find the middle point, that, you know, the, the happy medium, until you've written down a number and hear from people and, and, you know, if we write down that lots should be a hundred acres, we're gonna probably hear they're too big in the rural district. If we write down that they're an eighth of an acre in the rural district, we're definitely gonna hear that they're too small.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, and the starting one is probably where they already are.
Right.
And then we hear from people, do you, do they want bigger lots? Do they want smaller? You know, what do, what do they want? But until you write it down, we're not gonna get different feedback than we've heard in the past.
Okay. Uh. I, I think some of the milestones that Tim proposes might need to be tweaked and.
Could you print two?
Put into a slightly different order. Um, public forums. Uh, I think the last one, milestone five.
Yep.
Probably needs to come before milestone four, just as the legal requirements go. Because you've got to have your public hearing before you submit it for the town board, for the town board.
Yeah, and I'm effectively suggesting that three goes before two.
Right. Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, because you're gonna be making some major cleanups between, between two and three. So you really don't wanna waste the HOP grant consultants' um, time on something that they're not gonna be used.
Right, yeah.
No. Right, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so that's sort of the housekeeping thing, um. Tim suggests that these are not official public meetings, and I don't know if that's legally correct.
As long as it's not a quorum.
I, 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 I agree.
I mean, I just assume to keep it open. I'd like it to be as open.
I, I think it should be.
They need to be open.
And I think there should be minutes.
Okay.
Oh.
Really?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree a little bit. There's, there's, there's milestone one is gonna involve sending drafts back and forth. There's gonna be a hundred different drafts. Milestone two, I agree, those.
Right.
Those need to be just regular public meetings.
Yeah.
Um, and then actually, uh, let's see, three, the rest of them probably do, but when you're actually just writing a draft, right, like the two people who are responsible for it, they, they, they wanna go to other people they can, but they're actually writing on paper. It's just sort of an exchange between two people.
Okay.
To get the draft out there. I think you have.
I'm, I'm gonna ask our public to weigh in on that. David?
My understanding is that sequential written, um, with, uh, a quorum is a public meeting.
This is not a quorum.
But if you have two.
Right.
And you share it with the other members of the committee, that is a public meeting. Right. So would they have to be, it would have to be shared at a planning board meeting?
Drafts would have to come to this group.
Right, exactly, yeah. Could be shit. I agree with that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is we've got six, we've got six different groups working together. They can't.
Independently.
Independently, that's what I mean. Six different groups independently working. That's not a public meeting.
No.
It's a work group.
Right.
As long as it's, as long as it's not a quorum.
Right.
Right, exactly. And we're, we're probably looking at two planning board members on each draft committee.
Um, Tim has it, I think, as, as one, if I'm reading it correctly.
No more than two.
Right. Yeah.
What's a quorum?
Four. Forum is four.
Right, but I would keep it at two.
Yeah, yeah, because part of the idea is to make it fast.
Right, exactly.
And so two gives more input, but it keeps it fast. There's, you know, it's not to, this is to get a good draft, not the final draft.
Right.
Okay.
So we want two, and we also would want one or two members of the public on each of those drafts?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Let's slow it down. Let's slow it down.
Well, no, it's, they're a part of them. They would be a part of the, that draft group.
Regrets, correct, every.
All, every, every person you add does add. I agree.
And it depends on how involved that person is.
Right.
You know, if they're actually editing and writing, okay. If they're just reviewing occasionally, I don't know. Smaller you keep these groups, the easier this is gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, does that raise an issue in your mind of enough transparency? As long as the drafts come to the full planning board in public session?
Um, I mean, each of you or small groups that are in quorum can write anything you want. Um, and, um, I would think you might wanna leave it at the dis- uh, discretion of the specific subcommittee for, um, some, some, some maybe, some not. That, that doesn't crush your, your quorum.
No, that's, that's, that's a good suggestion. No, that's, that's, that's a good suggestion. Again, if, like, if you pick on Brad, the legs, if he wants to go to the Lake Association and say, hey, let's. Here's some things we're thinking, that, that's his prerogative.
Right, one person from each of the Lake Association.
Just write it fast and loose, that's his prerogative.
Yeah.
And I was picking on Brad.
Well, I mean, so it's, it's a ton of work.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ton, absolute ton of work.
A lot of work, and it's, it's.
Well, especially that, because it's a new district.
Yeah.
So it's a.
And quicker to do it by yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Compensation is so good.
Yeah, right.
Don't pick who started.
Um, Sharon, it's your turn.
Hey. I don't know why, in a sense, what's happened so far, I think, is that the Lake District has had meetings. And people have been asked, what is it they want? I don't think you've gone to any other communities to do that.
We haven't.
We haven't.
I don't think it's fair, just to just to.
Well, our. Just one example, our intent is to do very, you know, a whole series of constituencies. Um, Rob, can you scroll down on that a little bit? So, so Sharon can see the different working groups that were proposing at this point?
Just for starters.
One group on just how the ordinance will be formatted on the page. Village, Community Business District, Lake District, Rural District, um, keep going. Jake Village, uh, other districts. And then site plan subdivision, excavation, if we have the time and energy. David?
I mean, the, the other thing is that you don't necessarily, to make effective use of, of public input. Different subcommittees might well be, uh, get more useful feedback, have at least the first drafts were already written by those subcommittees. And then there was input from, um, a small subset of the public, um, to, uh, make the, the, the first round of revisions, um, so that you're not coming to the public with, you know, totally half-cod.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. See Lee?
I'm just gonna be. Homuncular.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't, I don't like the idea that, that there's on purpose. Not putting enough people in so you don't have to have it open, so you don't keep the minutes. I don't, I don't think that's being transparent. And I think it should be, people should know, people should be able to go and listen. I mean, two people or four people, whatever you, you have. It's not very much, and you got, what, twenty-five thousand acres of this town? So it's, I just, to me, it's not transparent, making four people. To, it, I don't know. I went, the only thing as I can say is I went through the first zoning ordinance. And we had quite a group, and, and it took us a while, but we did it, you know, and, and it had. People from all over the town, you know, not just, you know, a set.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Seeley, and I also hear what, um, what Eric said. And what Brad said in terms of, before we start discussing with. Townspeople, we have to have a starting point, we have to have a foundation. Which is, is just a starting point for discussion. And, you know, like, like Eric said, if we say. In the R five district, you can have eighth acre lots. We know that that's gonna generate a little bit of discussion, once we put it out to the public.
Can't you separate, can't you follow our zoning ordinance now by the structured setup? And then work on the language to get what you want?
Well, there, there are a whole lot of different ways of structuring or formatting. Uh, the zoning ordinances that we've looked at, or in theory, have been presented to us to look at. I won't vouch for all of the members to say that they've read everything, but, um, that there are definitely, um.
That's true.
A, a lot of formats to pick and choose from, and some, some are organizationally better than others. And for instance, um, you know, we list all of our regulations by district. And what if we listed all of our regulations by topic? Like what's allowed, what's a special exception? And we say, these are by rights in all of our zoning districts. These are the special exceptions that are allowed in all of our zoning districts. And is it going to be more user-friendly if we do it that way or the other way? Do you, you follow?
Yep. I understand you.
And I, I don't know which way is better until we look at it.
Yeah, the other issue we've got at this point, Seeley, is this isn't the original zoning ordinance. It's, it's thirty-two revisions to the zoning, thirty-two different revisions. Years in there, to the point where some of them are so ambiguous that it doesn't work. I mean, I'll tell you, I'll do the R five one. R five in case says minimum lot size is five acres except for dwelling. In which case, if you have a minimum, you have to have a minimum of five acres per dwelling. If you have one, you can, on five acres, if you could have two, you could have two dwellings on ten acres. Except, it also says you can only have one building on.
And now there's.
One lot. You could only have one lot, which means the only way you could have two is if you subdivide the ten acres into two five acre lots.
Yes.
It doesn't allow you to say, I wanna put my two lots over on this three acres, and I'm gonna conserve the other seven. Cause I can only put one based on the regulation that it sits today, or in fact, you'd rather have it the other way. Because.
With the land, look at the land.
Exactly.
All up to what you got there.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But you'd rather, you'd rather be able to conserve more area by putting housing closer together. You know, I mean, that's the things that you gotta look at, because some of the revisions were done that way. It's the same thing with the ADU. We have an ADU, except it basically says there, you can't have a detached ADU in the R five district. Cause that would be a second dwelling on a lot.
But you, but you also have to look at, if this all transcribes and is developed. You're increasing all the services in the town by increasing your, um, population. Roads, recreation things, you know, utilities, I mean, you're gonna have. It's gonna cost the town money if you have more housing over through the whole town with, you know, without really. Deserving or saving with some of that, those things are, so your lakes, watersheds, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's a big deal. And it's hard to.
I know. The other side says, if you don't have more housing, you're not gonna have younger, you're not gonna have any younger people coming to town. Which, wait, hold on, hold on, which means your emergency services is going to go up. Because the ambulance don't go to thirty-year-olds, they go to seventy-year-olds. And if everybody's seventy.
Oh, but that isn't happening. Now, can I ask you a question, you're from the school? How many kids in the graduating class?
There's five hundred fewer kids in the school district than there was twenty years ago. That should tell you something.
Well, how many in the graduating class now?
Sixty-seven this year.
Average number of.
Seventy-seven.
Average number of people per household is one point seven in Enfield.
Right.
Thirty years ago, it was four point seven.
Right, people, people said the census was wrong, because we've got more housing units than we did ten years ago. Well, that's because the family sizes are smaller, not because they got the census wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're trying to find the balance between transparency, which I agree with.
Yeah.
Extremely important, um, and efficiency, um, in doing it. So, starting small, getting bigger quickly.
Right.
Um, so that, you know, you, you, you get one or two people given feedback to, uh, a, not even a first draft, a preliminary draft. So it's, there's not a, not even a first draft until it comes to this committee is up, is per, is there. And then you, then you get it, those people that you can attract, um, from various groups. Um, to what, um, possibly work with you on, uh, on the various subcategories of your, of your. Morning, it's not, it's not something, it's just one person and, and one committee member that's gonna write the whole thing. That, that's just to get it started.
Right, yeah, the, the key is just to get it on paper. And then people, so, so the public has something to respond to. Rather than going to, I'm changing my cue, uh, of my opinion, rather than going to the public and saying, hey, what do you want?
Right.
It doesn't work. You, you gotta have something on a piece of paper that people can read and say, yes, no, you're crazy, you're, you know.
Right.
That's right. Karen?
I do think that it was a very sensitive issue to a lot of people. And Brad, I agree with you in part, but I do think back to the meeting that was with the master plan. Um. I think I was very confused, because, like, well, we're just throwing it out and seeing what will stick. That was a quote from someone.
I know.
In this group, maybe not this particular group, but on a town committee. And I was appalled, because I don't wanna look at my property that way. I don't want somebody just throwing out ideas, and then especially. I want it by district. I want the people in my district to decide what we want for our district personally. Because that's where we live, and we know the ins and outs of living in that area. You know nothing about people who live on the lake. I don't know what their experience is like. Um, and I'm not gonna sit in on their meetings and, and put input into what they should have or not have. Um, and so that's important to me. And that was why I said, gee, I'm sensitive to the, when it came up again about meeting with the people at the lake. They got to decide, I think, well, what is it you want? If you came to R one district and said, what is it you want? That might be very useful as a point of beginning, um, because there again, we can tell you what our experience is. So I don't wanna prolong, yeah, I understand, you have a huge task, and, and how do you do it? I don't wanna make anything more difficult for people, but, but, um. If you're gonna propose, here are some ideas, make it, make it a plausible idea. Not, oh, would you like a seventy-five foot building in your neighborhood? That, to me, that's not plausible. Um, because it's, it would dwarf my house. Um, you know, would you, what's the type of density you want in your neighborhood, you know? So, I don't wanna take more of your time, but those are, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
I, I think we can accomplish that by starting small. One or two people toggling together a first draft or rough draft. And then involving a few more people from the particular district. Tweaking with their input, and then having a larger group discussion. With more people, and seeing if we're on the right track. Or we need to change direction. Does that, does that make sense?
That level would be your public, first public meeting on that subject.
Yeah, would you, that, which I think is actually step three, as I've, um, as I've outlined it. Start small, one or two people, then bring in a few more people from the particular district, that's step two. Rewrite as necessary, redirect as necessary, and then bring in whoever from the Lake District. The R one district, the R three, whatever, into a group discussion. And see if we're on the right track, if we can reach consensus.
That have to be three phases? Can that be two phases? I don't know.
Whi- which phase would you eliminate?
Um. I think maybe one, one is just like a couple people doing something together.
Yeah.
And then phase two was like four people.
Or five, you know, bring in, bring in a few, uh, uh, indeterminate number, but a, a small group. To critique what the initial draft says, basically.
Or would it be, the second group would be an invited group.
Yeah.
Of four or five people, and then the third group, it's open to everyone there in that district. So you may get invited to group two, Sharon, okay? Cause we're saying.
No, I, I think she should be one of the two to write it.
Well, she can be that too. But what I'm saying is, there's going to be, there may be four to six people. Who are in group two to say, you, this makes sense or it doesn't make sense. Or it's, exactly, or it's out in left field. And then you say you have a meeting in here with probably fifty people. And you're not invited, you're, it's open to the fifty people. It's open to the people, it's open to anybody, actually. But it, but you're looking for input on that district. And that's before it gets to the consultant.
I'm just thinking, the time that you guys have, and the number of districts that you have. And so that was why I was suggesting, start with your group of four people and five people. And hash some, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm just thinking, how are you gonna do this? This is gonna take a lot, so.
Uh, you, you've got different groups working on parallel tasks. So you've got five different or six different topics. That are proceeding along side by side at roughly the same timetable. So it, it, it seems to me that if we do parallel with small groups. We are not losing any time, and we're probably. That would be the most efficient way of getting to the end goal of having a draft. That we can give to the consultants and say, clean this thing up so it looks legal.
I have utmost respect for everybody on this committee, and, and it's just a daunting thing. Um, so however you guys wanna do it, what you're talking about so far sounds fine.
Okay, um, Sharon, I really appreciate your, your comment and your input on this. Um, we, we wanna do this transparently. We wanna have community buy-in, and. You know, starting off with, with a plan for. Increasing the amount of public involvement as we refine things. Seems to me to be a reasonable and rational way to approach this. And yeah, it is a big project, as I think. As I think Rob pointed out, we have twenty-three years of tweaks. And, you know, if you've ever built a house or done plumbing or electrical. If you tack on and tack on and tack on year after year, at some point, you've gotta say this is just a rat's nest, and that's what our zoning ordinance is. And I, I think a long time ago, we as a board decided that there are enough contradictory, unclear things that have evolved over the years, that rather than try to go through and reconcile everything. We should take what's good, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater, but basically we wanna start and write from scratch. David?
I don't know how many of you have tried to write a term paper or in college or a, uh, publishable scientific paper or anything like that. You gotta have that small group, um, and then feedback to be effective and efficient.
I, I think tonight we've crystallized that idea. And we will pursue that way.
We have a way forward, I think. Have you got, have you got enough for your IHOP, for your HOP grant?
IHOP grant, yeah. You'd get better attend, attendance at the meetings.
If we had.
Yeah, they'd be at seven in the morning.
Yeah, I know.
But people would come.
That's true.
Have you got enough for your? Uh, I, along with what you move tomorrow.
I, I've got enough to, um, carry on a discussion and I've got the outlines in my head of what we wanna do. And after I do my first draft, will you take a look at it, Dan?
Sure. What are you doing? Oh crap. What, what?
Which one were you doing? You're doing the first one, aren't you, I think?
I was gonna say, you were on the list.
I thought he was talking about.
Oh yeah, I'll look at it.
Do you need anything from the board as far as submitting it? Cuz I have the view that you guys should just write it and work with Rob and.
Right.
And submit it. Yeah, um, planning, planning boards are allowed to submit grants.
No, I mean, you need the board to take action tonight, so that you can submit it within two weeks.
I don't think. Uh, we, we, we have, uh, one more meeting.
Oh, okay.
In September. So by then, uh, by then we will have a hopefully final version. And we'll circulate it to the board.
They don't have a meeting after the twelfth.
Oh, no, you don't need a.
I just wanna make sure that.
Okay.
That David didn't need anything from this group tonight. To make sure that he could submit it on time.
Um, that will happen at our second meeting of this month. And I will, I will ask for a resolution from the board, which will be recorded in the minutes. And there's, I think there's an RSA that you might have to reference. And I will draw heavily from the boilerplate of our HOP one grant. Because that's the way we did that one. Okay, moving right along, now that we've got the zoning rewrite project. Who wants to go first? Bill, Dan?
Oh hell, I can throw out mine.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Should be enough for everybody, plus there might even be enough for, for the public out there, or at least.
Yes, they're gonna start.
Thank you.
As you said, you wanted it to be in warrant article form. I put it warrant article form, good. Um, I dropped, and I did get to you, Brad, about it, but I did drop the, um, what is it, the, 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 uh, fourplex? No, no, the, the, uh, the one that we can do as opposed to the select one, I mean, as opposed to the, the, uh, zoning board. It's not a special exception, it's a.
The conditional.
Initial use, cuz it doesn't exist at this point.
It, it doesn't.
We, we may not be able to do it anyways. Well, I said the fourplex would be by special exception of the zoning board.
I think that's a good place for it to be at this point.
Cuz right now you can actually do a threeplex.
Mm-hmm.
In the R five district, you can do a threeplex, it's just gonna be called. Huh?
You can't build a four house on a, on a.
Yeah, you can do a threeplex.
Two ADU.
It's gonna be two ADUs though. The only thing that's going to be.
Saying up to four here.
I'm saying with special exception.
Yeah, well, you know they're gonna get that anyway.
And plus they have to meet the cluster developments.
I just think you, I think that's a big mistake. You're adding all of that population to an area that is, is rural. And you, you got to all your best, that's why people live out there, you know, because it's quiet. Um, there's not a lot of people, people that ride horses, do the, do bikes and things like that. For the, a lot of people do, you know, and I just think having four houses.
Not four houses.
It's gonna, gonna take away.
It's.
From the, from the whole environment.
A fourplex is not four houses. A fourplex is one house with four units in it.
Yeah, but that's people.
Yes.
People.
And it's five acres of land.
Everything. And they go fly up the road and down, you know, it's just wild. And I've seen it, the, how some of this building is going on and.
Okay. Here's one for you, Seeley, do you believe you should be able to have a duplex in the R five district?
Uh, that does not bother me.
Cuz we don't, you can't, you can't today. Yeah, it's a duplex, they're all. They're all attached at this point.
Well.
Cuz right now, by law, they can do a detached also. You could do, you could do two ADUs today. Under present state law.
And ju- just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's going to happen immediately or in five years or ten years. Rob, Rob, do you agree? Rob, how many ADUs do we have in this town since the ADU was?
How many double ADUs?
How many?
Zero.
Zero?
Haven't gotten any yet.
Haven't got any ADUs yet.
And how long, how long has that law been in effect?
Year and a half?
Yeah.
Zero.
And we haven't any, have any clu- cluster development in twenty-five years.
I don't know about that. It's coming. People have been buying up the land and steps separating it out and getting ready.
Oh, I know, there's, and this is, this is a way, we were saying, well, at least Tim and I agree that cluster housing is better than people subdividing. Cuz subdividing, you're using up all the land.
I understand that.
Cluster housing, you're able to save a lot of the land.
Exactly.
You know, it's like, and you just keep adding to thousand-foot driveways. Because you're cutting it up into. Three acre lots in the R three. Yeah.
David?
I guess have to be careful.
I know.
You, you gotta protect the, what people like.
I thi- I think, you know, for the character of a rural part of town, the R five, um, and the, at least current process for approval and exceptions. When does fourplex become an eightplex or a thirty-sixplex? Um, and, you know, by exception, um, and, and therefore, um, you know, another um, Ironman type of development. Um, I, I have some, some thoughts about that. Cuz I know it will get, the limits will get pushed.
Well, the town would have to pass a, an ordinance that says fiveplex, sixplex, eightplexes are allowed by special exception. All that this document does is say that a fourplex could be allowed by special exception.
And you think that's defensible long-term? Um, when, when it's pushed, I, I, I.
It, 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 it depends on what, how the town would vote. Because, because. Or, because four is a hard cap. And.
So is thirty-five B.
No, because our zoning, our our, our rules for granting variances do not at this time place any limits on how much of, of a variance can be granted. In, in, in other words, if somebody came in, as they did and wanted to build a seventy-five foot tall building. And the zoning board of adjustment said, okay, you've made your case. We will grant you that variance, that's fine. Under this proposal a person who wanted to build a fourplex could build a fourplex with a special exception. The person wanted to build a fiveplex or an eightplex. Then the zoning ordinance would have to be changed by vote of the townspeople at town meeting.
Send just a variance?
This is not a variance.
No, that's not a variance.
You can't get a, they.
What if I're an apartment, getting that mixed up with calling it an apartment house? One building, you have all these ADUs, I mean.
No, an ADU, you, ADU by law cannot, can, it has to be on a single residential unit. So you couldn't have ADUs on these four.
And it has to be at the, attached to the house.
One attached, one can be detached. So right now, you could, but you could actually build a house today that you're calling your principal building.
Yeah.
With an ADU attached, and you could have a detached ADU up to a thousand square foot. That could be on the other side of the world.
The state thing, it's a design board?
That's the state law, yeah.
Oh, no, we have it in the state.
Oh, no.
Unless they took it out.
Yeah.
When it, person can have a guest house. If they have over fifty acres that they had. But they can have over fifty acres.
But the ADU is, is only on residents, single.
Single family.
Single family residents. So it can't be attached to an apartment, you can't have it on apartments, or you can't have it on duplexes either. You call it commercial buildings? Yeah.
Single family residence, period, full stop, end of sentence. Sharon?
I have two things to say.
A little louder, please.
I have two things to say. Um, we can talk about this, but really what will happen is when you meet with the people from the rural bike district. They will make the determination to agree with this or not, is that not correct?
That is correct, that is correct. And then furthermore, once the basic concept is refined into zoning ordinance language by a consultant. Job it is to write things that are legal, then that will go before the town for a vote. So hopefully, there's enough public input, enough opportunity for people to comment on that we're not gonna wind up with something that the majority of the town doesn't want. In other words, if you as people in the village district say that you want a maximum building height of thirty-seven feet. Picking a number out of the air. And then that gets crafted, it goes before the whole town for a vote. And people from all over town are gonna vote on it. But if you guys from the village district can say, this is what we want in the village. I have a feeling that the rest of the town would respect that, because the door swings both ways. That make sense?
It does. I, I also feel, um, this isn't my second thought, but just in response to what you just said, I also feel people don't seem to care about what happens anywhere in town if it doesn't affect them. Because they're not thinking, what will this really be like? And that, and to support, the last thing I wanna say about this right now, thank you for your time, to support what Seeley, I think, is trying to say and concerned about is a four-family dwelling can be big. Four separate, you know, it's, it's in one building, but that can be a big building. And to put that in the rural district, um, that's a little scary, and scarier to me than having separate buildings on, on a parcel of five acres.
So you know what you could do? If you're in the R five district, you could say, okay, we will allow a fourplex. But the maximum size of each unit is eighteen hundred square feet. Three bedrooms, two bedrooms, you know, what, whatever seems to make sense. So there's, you know, there, there's an opportunity to, to, to place guardrails on it.
Can you just clarify, there's two different things happening right now, and I wanna make sure they're not getting confused. So right now, we're discussing Dan's draft that's planned.
Yeah.
On meeting twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
But further discussion could happen as part of the overall zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
With the general community groups.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure they're not getting.
There's another reason for this also, is there's a state law that says you have to have workforce housing in your largest district. R five is our largest district. So you have to make it so that it is affordable. And affordable in Grafton County. I'm not sure you can do it.
I'm not, I'm not sure whether that's legal to do that.
Well, it's legal enough a law.
It will cost the town a lot of money.
Well.
And, and, you know, just a group of people.
I will tell you, it did, it cost Hinsdale two point three million dollars, cuz they lost in court.
Hinsdale, the racetrack, I mean, that's a whole nother ton of town.
Well, it's a town, it's in New Hampshire. A developer brought it to court and said, that's your largest district and you're not making workforce available housing in it.
Have to read that, see that.
Yeah, but, which is why you have to do something to make workforce housing.
Oh, well, the conservation district used to be, was.
It's not a residential district, it's, it has to be your residential district.
Used to be ten acres, and I don't know what happened to that either. So underground lighting and all that.
Can largest be defined as most populated?
No, it's defined by size, by size, the size of the town.
Doesn't make any point. David, you get to work on it.
Yeah, that's why. I mean, the obvious place for workforce housing would be in the most dense area. And in a lot of places it is.
It's, it's, no, it should be in town, it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the residential, it should be in.
Right.
I agree, but.
That's ridiculous, it puts them, I don't know who wrote that.
It was one of them. No, I'm sorry, it was the Senate, it was the Senate that did it, not the House.
Before my time.
Yeah, it was the Senate that did it, not the House.
And, and, you know, it.
We won't waste your time.
It, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because people who can afford workforce housing can't necessarily afford, excuse me, can't necessarily afford to run automobiles from the center of town way out to Potato Row. to run automobiles from the center of town way out to Potato Road. And that's kind of a disconnect, in my mind.
Yeah.
And maybe it does need to be changed. You know, we, it, wha- what I've found in the legislature in my first six months, and I've got a lot to learn. What I have found is that you've got a lot of people who are very passionate about increasing housing. And they, they kind of have their blinders on. And if they look at a town zoning district and they say, okay, the largest district, we're going to put workforce housing there, they don't necessarily take all of the factors into account. And I, I know I've heard Eric attest many times that when they lived out of town, they were spending, I don't know how many hours a day and how many gallons of gas.
We reduced our mileage on our cars, ten thousand miles per year.
Yeah.
By moving five miles.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know.
Ten miles on every trip, multiple times a day.
Yeah.
And then you walk to the library instead of driving.
The other thing that brought that law in was there were towns where their smallest district was our five. If you didn't have a five acre lot, you couldn't build a house in that town.
Oh, true.
Yeah, and that's why they had to, they, they put this across, because they said, wait a minute, nobody can afford to own five acres, and that's why you made it in our five. And you obviously couldn't do workforce housing.
Look at the town of line.
That was it.
Was it, was it five acres?
It was five acres.
I thought, I thought it was more.
No, they, they had a five acre minimum, their minimum district, and it was small, was a five acre district.
So what we could do is, if there's a proposal for some workforce housing, make another district around it, our five.
Yeah, but then you'd have to, you'd have to go, you'd, the del- developer's not going to wait two years. Because you got it, you've got, you've got to bring it to town meeting in order to even, to put in a new district.
Well.
And you've got to have.
It could happen by March.
Where are you going to put it?
I don't know.
Right? I mean, right here.
They define workforce housing as, uh, income.
It's income.
Seventy-five thousand.
Uh, so I'm looking at it now, so. Twenty twenty-four, Grafton County, hundred percent of twenty twenty-four HUD median area income for a family of four. And Grafton County is a hundred and eight thousand.
Yeah.
Estimated affordable purchase price is three hundred and twenty-six thousand for the property.
Yeah.
And for, uh, so that's for a family of four. Okay, no, that, yeah, so that's, yeah, so that's the number for, I don't see individual of this, on this chart.
I think workforce housing, they make it, they, it is family of four.
Yeah, well, so I'm looking at the twenty twenty-four workforce housing per life and rent limits, published by the New Hampshire Housing.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, so a family of four, per R S A, six seventy-four, colon, fifty-eight dash sixty-one. Grafton County would be a hundred and eight thousand income and three hundred and twenty-six thousand purchase price.
Yeah.
Is that affordable?
So that's why, that's why it's, you couldn't build a single family.
Exactly.
On five acres.
Exactly.
That's why they can't, can't develop firemen or that sort of housing.
Right. But that's what I'm saying is, in order to, in order to make it workforce housing, it has to be more than a single family unit to fit within that. Because nobody's going to be able to, we know that, land, land, you know, putting, bringing power in, plus putting in a driveway, plus doing the, uh, the septic as well, you're already up to over a hundred thousand. And you build the house, that's why you, you say, you know, it's, for workforce housing, it can't be a single family unit.
I still think you should all get a grant and build it, and build, build it themselves.
Well.
That would satisfy.
You know, I, I, ideally, we would be loading in money. Um, I, I think somebody is going to bring a bill this coming session that will establish a revolving low interest, uh, housing fund that people can borrow from.
Paid for how? Yeah.
Uh, I don't know those details, but I'm sure it would be.
Oh, really?
It would be, uh.
By taxes?
Included, included in, uh, the budget.
Well, it could be a low interest loan.
Yeah.
It'd be a low interest loan.
Low interest loan.
Yeah. So it'll be state bonded loan subsidized by.
That's. That's the only way you're going to be able.
No problem.
To, to, to get affordable housing.
Can I ask a couple of questions about your draft? Uh, okay, so just clarification purposes, the four-family dwellings do not have to be a cluster development, but they are.
They have to have the set, the buffer zone of a cluster development.
Okay, just wanted to make.
Cluster development says it has to be a hundred foot buffer, all four sides.
Right, okay, but they're, they themselves are not a cluster development, so. And then I think it's supposed to be four or five point one, section F one.
You think so? Okay.
I'm looking at it.
Look through me then. Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, go to ADUs.
Let's go to ADUs, Phil.
Come to the public hearing.
And, and be sure that the state is going to muck with it, and whatever we do this year is very likely going to get changed. Um.
Next year.
I would say within six months of the time that we pass this.
Assuming they pass it.
Assuming, assuming that we pass it, yeah.
Right. Yep.
Well, well. My impetus for, for rewriting this is to try to figure out a way to get housing costs down and the cost of building houses, and we saw that, that, uh, free, free cluster that I sent out. What this is, what this does is it implements that.
Can you put that up?
Do that.
Rob, on the screen.
Yep, go get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But really what it is, is three ADUs.
Yeah.
In one building.
Yeah.
On a very small lot.
Right.
And, um, I also thought we had to have, you know, the, the ordinance should have a purpose, so we got the purpose up here at the top. Um, a need for more diverse, independent, and affordable housing, these units will improve the inventory of smaller housing without significantly altering the rural character of the community. So I thought that was important. Have a purpose. And the definition, we had to have a def- def- what is an ADU? People say, was it, was, so this clearly lays out what an ADU is. Residential living unit that is inner attached to a single-family dwelling, and that provides independent living facilities for one or more persons, including provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel of land as the principal dwelling unit it occupies.
Are you proposing that we eliminate detached?
No, I think you, you can still have detached as well.
Does it say that?
Yeah, we get, get a little further down.
Um, I think we need to have detached, I think David's right, like, that's one of the inconsistencies, is, is it says that an ADU is attached or within, and then later talks about having detached ones, that's a language consistency.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there is some inconsistencies in here.
Yeah, well, we could.
Lead us to that.
Within, attached, or detached.
Right, that's.
Right.
Very, but, but I think it needs to be in the definition, if you're going to allow detached, you have to include it in the definition.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I threw in this, this section on conditional use, because, you know, there's some question about, oh, what if somebody wants to move a manufactured home on a lot, where there are no other manufactured homes?
Right.
Uh, what this does, it allows the community to have a say in whether or not that should happen. And by, by authorizing the planning board to, to permit conditional uses for, for, uh, building an ADU, in case someone wants to build something really weird or really strange, this gives the, the public an opportunity to have, have some say as to how that's going to happen. And then here's the, the conditional use permit application showing, shall claim the following, and then, and because we're now allowing three ADUs, or, or principal residence plus two ADUs, that, that entails, uh, you know, a multi-family.
Yeah.
But by having this, this, uh, conditional use in here, we can review that like we would, uh, you know, instead of, instead of having to go through that whole process, and they just additional expenses, we can, we can approve that through this condition, conditional use process.
So, so you're suggesting that all ADUs have to come here rather than just getting a building permit?
Yes.
I don't care for that. I think if somebody's building a garage, and they want to put an ADU above the garage, that can be part of their building permit.
Okay, I agree with Eric.
Yeah.
Uh, my, my question, Phil, which, which is the principal dwelling unit?
Pick one.
They're all the same size. The same size.
Yeah.
They're all, this, this, this was all eight hundred square feet, eight hundred square foot.
Each one.
Each one.
Each one.
But not counting the covered patio.
For the garage, it's conditioned, the conditioned space.
It's a living use, it's the, yeah.
Okay.
In the definition.
You get the size because it's not heated.
Right.
Right. Or air-conditioned.
Or air-conditioned.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah.
The end you went.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, um.
Yeah, if you were to take the garage and air-condition it, that would be.
Considered livable.
Part of the.
However, that would be.
Or if you only did it to one, that becomes your principal.
This, these are all, these, these would all be built on a slab.
And you bet one is a resolved garage.
Right, you could, yeah, you put it on a foundation and just have.
And you put a basement under them, and then condition the basement, that would take you outside the.
Yeah.
The square footage that way, see. So, so basically, this kind of thing ties into the twelve hundred square foot or whatever it is limit. And.
One of them could be larger, if you wanted, if you want to make that.
Yeah, yeah.
The principal dwelling. But like I said, my impetus for this was to try to create cost-effective housing for, for people.
Mm-hmm.
Especially elderly people who live now in the big giant.
Victorian.
Three Victorians.
I know.
All by themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
If they could sell that Victorian and buy one of these, you know, and cut down on the maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, on, on, on Main Street, I think, where Lutheran churches, I think there's at least two of them, there's a single lady living in them.
Yeah.
You know, which in my mind is.
We need twelve rooms.
Right, yeah. I know.
Anyway, you have to clean them too, so.
So would they be regulated as multi-family?
Well, that's what it says, that's what it says. What I, what I'm saying is, multi-family, if, if you go through this process, this, this con- uh, conditional use process, you wouldn't be subject to the multi-family regulations.
If I put a, if I put a solid wall in one of them, then it becomes a detached, and it could be a two-in-one, and then it's not multi-family. I'm just trying to figure a way to get around, that they're going to get around it.
That is a great example of having something on paper is good.
Right, yeah, exactly.
That's why I threw it up. Yeah, that's good.
It's like the three garages, put them together, three stall, and you can air-condition it, because that's the primary.
I, I think, um, from a building code standpoint, it's going to be a multi-family if it's three units.
Yeah.
Regardless of what we say.
Right.
So I think you're correct in writing that it will be subject to the.
The multi-family.
To the multi-family, simply because the building code, they're going to call for it. Yeah.
Yeah.
We, I mean, I, I might be wrong on that, but when I asked about it once, that was the answer, was when you go from two to three, your building code shifts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, uh, when I built my garage apartment, I, I found some greenboard drywall.
Mm-hmm.
That's totally fire resistant. It, it, you, and you can totally separate each one of these units and make them totally, uh, independent.
And then that's one of the.
There's a drywall.
Right, but that's one of the reasons why the building codes do it, is because you get a safety factor.
Right, right.
The fire, the fire code.
Yeah, can you do that on, on a retrofit?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good, you can.
Yeah, and it's, and it's waterproof too, I mean.
But you have your hot water heater and your washer and dryer in your garage, which isn't the heated area.
No, it's not.
It's not. It is not considered living. But with that, it's going to freeze in the winter.
Not insulated, not if it's insulated.
Not, okay.
It'd be cold.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be cold, but a hot water heater won't freeze. It, it, actually, if you ins- insulate it rather, I got, in my garage apartment, I, I don't have any heat where the hot water heater is. And it doesn't get below forty degrees in that little room.
Yeah.
Because a hot water heater is always throwing off some heat. Washer dryer now, you may want to move that into the, into the kitchen.
I think that you're getting into details of.
Yeah, we're getting into.
Of individual design.
Individual design, now we don't, we don't want to go there.
These are proposed changes that are going to town meeting twenty-five, right, next, next town meeting? Does, but we don't have it, we're not putting anything with conditional use permits on, so does it make sense?
I just threw it in, threw it in there so we could just, we could talk about it.
Okay.
Um, a lot of this, a lot of this could be, could be cut back. And that made simpler for town meeting.
I wonder if it makes sense to take that out.
About the only change I see for town meeting is go from eight hundred to twelve hundred.
Yeah.
This could be.
And.
This, this could meet the conditional use state regulation, because it is a, a different housing option.
Are we allowed to make up our own innovative land use schemes?
Innovative.
It, it is innovative, I agree. The question is, do we have the power, does the state delegate that power to us? Or is that something that resides in the legislature?
What is?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what.
You don't know what it says now.
Uh, I, I know that the legislature has allowed maybe a dozen different innovative things in statute.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if it will allow towns to add to that or not, but that should be easy to figure out.
Wow, yeah, and this will all get legal review before it goes to town.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so.
I would say, my concern would be that it might be confusing to community members who aren't familiar with the planning board's recent discussions, like, what is a conditional use permit if that doesn't exist anywhere?
Right.
Does it open the door for when we do a rewrite, something that people aren't comfortable with?
Yep.
I'm confused, uh, thank you for making that point, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sharon.
I'm confused about, and maybe this is not the time to discuss this, but the difference between a conditional use and a multi-family building, I think, is that what you said, Eric?
Uh, yeah, those are two, so the conditional use would be very good for my, that's like, it's analogous to a special exception, except there's clear parameters written down, and the planning board does it as part of the planning process, as opposed to going into the zoning board. So it, so it brings a form of exception to the planning process within the planning board. The three, the, the size of the building, that's just the building code, where if you build a single-family home, you have to meet one code, if you build a three-family home, you have to build a different code. And some of the differences are like fire restrictions between the units, like that's an easy example, you have to have a different fire rating. So if you have a fire in one kitchen, it will take an hour or something to get to the next one, I don't know the details, but it's a different drywall setup between units, if you have three, build three units than if you have two units.
I mean, today, you could build this.
Yeah.
And you don't need conditional use, because.
It's a three family.
It's a three family, it's a multi-family, it just has to meet the multi-family.
Building code.
Building codes.
What are setback requirements and boundary?
Depends on.
It would be on the district.
Whatever the district is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, then when, when we increased the size from eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet, I took out containing no more than two, two bedrooms and one bathroom. I deleted that, because it's twelve hundred square. I deleted that because if it's twelve hundred square feet, you're gonna wanna have two bathrooms and you're gonna probably wanna have three bedrooms. So.
I think that's, I think if we, I think if we look at the RSA, it's written in there.
Pretty?
I think so, it was at one point unless it changed.
Um, it's a minimum, I think.
Did we, was it a minimum?
Yeah.
Okay. Give me a couple of seconds and I'll pull up the current law. That might be why we wrote something in them.
Right, we wrote it in because there's a, yeah. I think it's like a seven hundred minimum, you can't be any lower than.
No, the two-bedroom, one bath.
Oh, the two-bedroom, one bath, yeah.
Phil, these three units, are they built as twelve hundred or eight hundred?
Those those are eight hundred.
Yeah.
And um but if you went to twelve hundred, you just have bigger rooms and maybe an extra bedroom. But it's 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 quite a quite a comfortable setup. What what the contract, when I talked to a contractor, he said they would flip the vaulted room in the kitchen. And then put the washer dryer in the in that big room, which is would be.
Well, yeah, if you, if, yeah, if you're going twelve hundred square feet, you're gonna put your.
You can do that.
The laundry inside. But.
Um. Not more than two accessory dwelling units may be created on a single lot, that's that's all current.
Yeah.
Uh I did, based on Eric's, the conversation with Eric last la- at last meeting. Uh we kinda wanna do away with this business of, you know, creating these, all these extra bedrooms and then not having proper sewage disposal. So. So I took, I took that out and then put in an A D U shall conform to the requirements of a single-family dwelling. Including provisions for water supply and sewage disposal, meeting requirements of this ordinance and applicable state regulations. Well, that means you can't, you can't have a three-bedroom septic, adds add three more bedrooms. Or four more bedrooms on the same septic without doing a redesign.
Right, that's current now, right?
Well, the state.
Yeah.
State law says you have to have a redesign for your system.
State law.
Right, in case your system fails, you have to have a redesign in place.
Doesn't mean you have to.
Well.
Yeah.
Hello.
Not just.
Need a design.
Get the design, yeah.
I know.
What what is the question that we're asking on A D U's?
How many bedrooms and and bathrooms are authorized in an A D U?
Okay.
Let's see, I did my research. I I pulled down a bunch of stuff on that.
It says a municipality may not limit an accessory dwelling unit to only one bedroom.
Right. Which we haven't done cuz we don't have anything in there that says the number of bedrooms.
I think we have the two-bedroom, one bathroom then.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, I think that's good. I think that's in existing.
That we put in, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right, we did.
Can I ask a question why the, so we're, are you crossed out on your number three?
Yeah, because I I replaced it with on the backside.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything, and I didn't read anything about sewer.
If on lots not served by town, so the property owner shall obtain D E S approval for a new onsite. I took that out because what what that's gonna do is. Sure, you have a design, you got a, you got a sewage that can't handle the extra people and the extra bedrooms, and it fails. It's gonna start polluting the town, the streams. So I said, if you're gonna build an A D U, make sure, make sure you got a a septic system in place that's designed to handle the extra.
You have to, I mean. They'll tell you, but they have to prove it, you know, if, let's say in my house. I wanna put on two units.
Right.
Yep.
And how do you know that I don't have, and I'll tell you, well, I got, I got. A system that will take five bedrooms. But how do you know that's true?
Should be on the, it should be all in the on the garden.
Yours is nowhere. You've got an older system, but you've got an older system. In the last, if you if you had put that septic in in the last thirty years, it's on record at the state. The design with the number of, with the number of bedrooms, cuz I've got one. I mean, I've got a two-bedroom, and mine is designed for four bedrooms, and it says it right on the certificate from the state. But yours is probably an older system prior to them doing the design.
It is, but I tell, feels bigger than it.
Right, exactly, I did too. But which, they're either gonna have to show that, or they're gonna have to have. An approved septic designer say, yes, it will handle it.
Right.
He has to say it.
You gotta clear.
You can't say it, it has to be an approved septic designer that says it.
Okay, so he's gotta add that then.
But. As it shall conform.
That's a big deal.
The requirements by a single-family dwelling, so if you're going to put an A D U in, you have to conform to those single-family.
Right.
Dwelling. Uh rules. I think he's got it, and I think it's written.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh which I think it's here, cuz I think it captures those cases where they don't have an approved one.
Right.
They would have to either demonstrate that it does.
They gotta get it approved, they gotta get it approved.
Or they'd have to bring it up, they'd have to bring it up the snuff.
Right.
So they would have to, you know, prove.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
By a by a septic designer, based on number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
That are feeding into.
They're, make the states making you. I always thought we had to give a copy to the town tax people. Of it, I thought that's when I built my house, I had one boy then.
Yeah. Yeah, I did, mine went to them.
Yep, so did mine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Through the building inspector.
Right.
That was eighty-five, I thought.
Okay, what else on A D U's?
Anything? Yeah, I took out the and must remain under one ownership, cuz we had that discussion last meeting as well.
Right, and the the state does, I believe, allow it to be under.
Multiple options. The issue you're gonna have in getting a mortgage, but that's not our issue.
That's not our problem.
Right.
Yeah. Is there something in the law about not being able to sell it off as a condominium?
At one time there was, and I'm not sure if that's still in it.
So if you're saying the A D U law in the state is in flux right now.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's been in flux for a while.
Yeah.
Cuz it made it through the House and didn't make it through the Senate or.
Yeah, whatever exists now, I know that there's a couple of people that are working. To make some changes next year.
Yeah, actually, section five of the A D U law includes. The approved sewage disposal system shall be installed if the existing system has not received construction approval. And approval to operate under the current rules or predecessor rules, or the system fails or otherwise needs to be repaired.
Right.
Yeah.
So the A D U law is very clear with, not only do you have to meet the rule, meet, meet it, but you have to have it installed.
Right, okay.
I'm not seeing anything about condominiumizing it, do you, Eric?
No, I don't see anything about ownership limitations other than. The town is allowed to require owner occupancy if wanted to.
Right.
Um but I don't see anything. And we're not allowed to require familial relationships between occupancies, that's not allowed.
Um. Uh here I have, A D U's may not be sold as condominiums unless the municipality explicitly allows it. So we can't.
The town.
Up to the town.
Which which paragraph or line is that from?
That's in um. Six seventy-four seventy-two. Uh I, one, common number one.
Okay. That is likely to be updated maybe.
Yeah.
Cuz H B twelve ninety-one does not mention that at all. But it doesn't take effect until July of next year.
Twenty-five or twenty?
Twenty, it says twenty-five.
Wow. Okay.
That's what it says.
Condominize everything today.
Yeah.
Doesn't go to effect till July. Yeah.
I don't know that this matters, but if you don't require owner occupancy of one of the units. What potentially could happen, somebody buys, you know, builds the building, buys the building, rents it out, Airbnb. You have three different people staying there in that neighborhood and um it's a revolving door. So um. That's just a caution.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they would need to get a short-term rental permit. In order to rent one of the units out, short-term, they wouldn't.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Wait, that's not rule yet.
Not really tried.
When it goes, when it goes into effect, which I'm sure at some point it will.
But we do have uh houses that are main residence and A D U's that are both rental.
Right, right.
Yeah. On Lake Street, there's at least two.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in my research, reviewing other towns and how they dealt with A D U, some got really strict about that. Where it it had to be under one ownership and they.
Hanover has that.
And they inspect every year, they come, you come around, you have to, you know, a whole bunch of paperwork. We don't wanna do that.
No.
It's a good idea.
She wants to stop it, yes.
But she doesn't want any more people coming to Enfield, just keep it the same way.
Well, you.
And don't make any changes. I love, I love Enfield the way it is, I do. But we gotta take care of our kids and our grandkids, if we want them here anyway.
You could, if you wanted to, could put it in that it could not be used in short-term rents.
Has anybody, any town that's trying to prohibit short-term rental has lost. Yeah, you can regulate it.
Right.
Permitting, but there's no prohibition. Think Portsmouth tried it, a couple of other towns have tried it and they failed at the street board.
Yeah, I understand, I I think what they're talking about is prohibiting the A D U from being the short-term rental. That's not, that's not prohibiting it in town, it's a specific class of dwelling units. Would not be available for short-term.
We can look into that, but I I think it's a loser, probably, cuz I think that they, there's been a few towns that have tried to prohibit short-term rentals.
Yeah, I I understand that, on a townwide basis.
Even by zone, yeah.
By zone.
Yeah. Portsmouth tried it in a couple of zones.
Yeah.
They lost.
Can you require owner owner occupancy for this type of of one of the units? Because then it doesn't, I think it matters less in my, I stay in short-term rentals all the time when I'm on vacation, I love it. Um it works out really well for a lot of reasons, but um. I stay in owner occupied places, so that if I have a problem, I have somebody to go to. Otherwise, there's nobody, I, we did stay in a place where I fell. And there was nobody there to say, look, this is what's happening, I had to email somebody, and I was okay. But, you know, there's just problems with places that are not owner occupied. Um and I don't know that you, in having this type of building, whether you want it to be owner occupied or not.
State law gives communities the option to do that, have that requirement.
Yeah.
And residency, the owner may also be required and could be demonstrated through voter registration, automobile registration. Or similar indicators of domicile, so. If if the community, they can do that.
I sort of like that.
Do we have something we wanna put in then?
I'm just trying to think of the downside. If you're serious about trying to get housing, I think that's the downside.
That owner owner occupied in one of the units.
Right.
I think.
Is 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 what you can, municipality can require. And um then it depends on what a definition of an owner is. Uh could be a member of an L L C, could be a beneficiary of a revocable trust. Um. Someone could be a person of interest with another legal entity, partnership, corporation that owns the property. So, you know.
I think, I think the downside is currently the only way. Within our zoning to take some of our very large buildings in the village and turn them into multifamily is through the A D U law. Because none of them have enough acreage to do it. And it would prevent, if you wanna think about like aging in place, it would prevent. An older couple from transferring the house to their kids prior to their death. Because the kids wouldn't live there.
Yeah.
Whereas if you, you, the finances would be very different if 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 the, if the older couple can live there, have A D U's. But transfer the property to the kids for Medicaid and other reasons, looking forward, you, that scenario goes away.
Right.
Eric, correct me if I'm wrong too, when when we proposed our short-term uh ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't we exempt owner occupied for permitting?
Yes, I think.
I'd have to go back through.
I think that's the little trick we did, and it was pretty much only for, it was places that were gonna be rented with no one renting.
Yeah, I.
And then you, and the provisions of the ordinance were that we would have a contact, somebody.
Yeah, there was definitely a.
In some, yeah.
Contact within thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really surprised that it didn't pass.
Okay, last one is uh parking, and we're already past eight-thirty. Did board wanna try to tackle this or put it off?
Well, Tim's not here, so why don't we wait?
Yeah, let's wait.
Yeah, okay. Um.
On the park.
So. We've done our new business. Any more comments from the public?
No, but thank you.
Well done.
I I try to involve the members of the public in the discussion when it's appropriate and helpful. And tonight, it's been very helpful and appropriate.
I really appreciate you. Rob's cleaning up the um design.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think having anything that's being discussed from paperwork. Um would be helpful to have on screen for anybody that may eventually wanna attend the teams.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you 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 make a very good point, and I think it's just a question of. At this point, there's no connectivity between this computer and. The server where all these files are, so Rob has to go back to his office, put it on a thumb drive and bring it over to here. Which is not the most efficient way of doing it.
But he gets great exercise.
I do, I get my steps in.
When are you gonna fix that?
It needs to be fixed.
Well, they don't, I think it's kind of a specific thing, we don't want this to be anywhere connected to our service, service server. Cuz this, I mean, some people use this that.
That's a good point, like a public computer.
Can you, can you put it on in advance for things that you know are coming?
Well, they try to, they try to load up my little drive here, but.
But we always, we always come up with stuff that we haven't thought of.
And this is gonna be for a larger conversation that I wanna have. As I know that there's probably people here expecting that when the new facility opens downtown, that we're all gonna be meeting down there. I would love to propose that we stay right here because my office is here.
Yeah.
And all of the land use records from the last forty-five or fifty years are still here.
Yeah.
So.
And. And I live right across the street. And Whitney lives down the road.
I live up the hill.
Obviously, if it's gonna be a big meeting, we're anticipating a huge crowd, I don't have any problem.
Yeah.
Using the space down there, but. I would love to propose that we continue to be here, but.
Yeah, this room won't get used much.
Yeah.
Well, you know, with, with, with the number of committees and whatnot that are meeting in this town, we really need to have two. Two spaces for committees to meet.
The cool thing is that, that renovated space at the Whitney Hall is gonna have lots of meeting space. There's like conference rooms and booths and crannies in that place now.
Small conference room on the first floor, there's the big one on the third floor.
Yeah.
The library has some meeting spaces, and then there's a space at the Public Safety Building as well.
And there's also the little one in the front on the third floor.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's gonna be.
Great for like executive session.
That's actually gonna be the premier one, cause it's got the stained glass windows.
Exactly.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Everybody knows we're there because they were just behind a wall.
Is the third floor going to have usable acoustics?
They're working on that, it's gonna be quite a little setup.
Right, yeah.
But it's a big room, I mean, it's.
I know it's a big.
I worry about it being very similar to our community building.
That's what I mean.
Acoustics, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's gonna probably need some kind of like. Panels on the wall or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, acoustic treatment is. Is what's needed at the community building. And it shouldn't be that hard after.
It actually is.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we adjourn this meeting?
Oh, good, so, can I hear a second? Hey, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Both tensions. We're adjourned eight forty two. Thank you, people. We made some progress today.